Okay, good evening. Today is February ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Health for Monroe. Uh, please allow me to confirm all members and participants uh that are in attendance this evening. Christopher Davis.
Present.
Uh, Mary Porter. Mary?
Present.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Hurley.
Here.
And Nancy Perrault.
Here.
Okay, um. I hereby declare, we have a quorum in this meeting is called to order. Copy the agenda and all related materials have been posted to and can be found on the town of Monroe website for public inspection. This public meeting is conducted remotely in compliance with the section one of Governor Lamott's executive order number seven B dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty using uh our Zoom electronic conference technology. This technology uh the public shall participate in real time. This meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, telephone, using access information set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has a unique participation information, so be sure that you have accessed the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only one hundred participants may access this remote electronic meeting at any one given time. Access to this meeting using technology is surely granted by the technology provider and is accessed uh based and not controlled by the town of Monroe. While it is anticipated, we will not exceed this participation limit for this meeting. If it appear we should be approaching said limit uh so that any member of the public is denied access to the meeting, I as chairman reserve the right to adjourn and continue this meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members to the public may participate. Please take notice the following regard regarding this remote electronic meeting. This meeting is become uh being conducted in real time. This meeting is open to the public. Uh, this meeting uh is being recorded, uh and we ask that you mute your microphone unless recognized to speak uh as anything you say or do displayed on your screen uh or said through the microphone system shall be recorded. Um, this meeting that any member of the public may listen or view this meeting anonymously. That the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days. Scouting shall be made available to the public within a reasonable amount of time or uh in town hall or upon written request. This meeting shall follow standard parliamentary procedure. Um, and we already said the mute microphone. Uh, as set forth on the agenda, this meeting will uh feature public participation uh as required. Um, I have not re received any kind of written comment from the public uh for today's dated agenda. Um, and that is about all she wrote for that. Thank you very much for listening to me babble all the legal mumbo jumbo. Good evening and thank you, everybody for coming. Um, we will move right to the uh next order of business. We will approve the minutes from our last meeting, which was December the eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Chris is a point of order. I got a quick question for you.
Absolutely, please go ahead.
What time did we call the more the meeting to order?
Um, I guess we will call it uh six twenty-four. Probably took me about two minutes to read that.
Okay, and I would like to add two items to the agenda, please.
Okay.
Under unfinished business F, I would like to add uh one staffing status.
Okay.
And item G under new business. Uh, item two uh ma- uh mask wearing mandate changes.
Okay. So noted. Okay, um, so I'm hoping everybody had a chance to uh read through the minutes uh from the previous meeting. Um, and I do vote to approve said minutes.
No.
Um, anybody in favor?
Second.
Okay.
Who was the second, please?
That was Michael. Mike Hurley. Uh, Chris.
Chris.
And Mary.
All right.
Unmute your mic, Mary. Can't hear you. Hold up a sign.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Perfect. All right. Vote carries unanimous. Uh, so letter D, uh Director of Health. Go ahead, Nancy. Take it away.
Okay, um, the environmental health activity report you should have. Um, some of the discussion uh regarding restaurants or mandated inspections. Um, and our last meeting, we discussed staffing needs. So I'll report on that later. So you you see that the variance to projection is seventeen percent for routine food service inspections. Um, and that's what that is why. Um, what you don't see on this report that I'd like to just sneak in is that um the reason why we haven't done as many restaurant inspections as we should, we would have been nice is that we've since we've met last, we've we've uh we've had nine different clinics. And we've been doing homebound visits. So I wanted to just share that with you and let me see if I have some numbers here. Don't have it. Uh, two hundred and forty doses we've given since then. So I just want you to be aware that that's what we've been bu- busy doing. Um, but does anybody have anything specifically like to discuss that they would like to discuss on the environmental health services activity report?
No, my my, all of my questions would all be surrounding the uh obvious uh lack of inspections.
Yep.
Um, however, uh the the does the sanitarian do something with administering of these medications or is he actively involved in the setting up of these clinics for something?
He is. Um, he actually, um, when you run a clinic, unless it's just a few people at that at the clinic, like maybe one nurse, because you're maybe you're going to handle maybe fifteen um patients. We have a large scales clinic. Um, he's always involved because you need somebody doing that is onsite as a backup. They're the ones that make certain that the VAM system doesn't go down. They're schlepping boxes of stuff back and forth for the nurse. So he's very much involved in those clinics and.
So he he's kind of like the uh a helper kind of guy.
Oh, yeah. He's the second in command. If I'm not there, he runs the clinic.
Okay.
Um, so and a lot.
He's the acting administrator of the site.
That's exactly right. Yep. So and that's and because of that role and you know, and that I'm not out there doing restaurant inspections for obvious reasons, that's what's killing us here. But I have good news to report on that end when we get to there.
Okay.
Um, let's see. So the other thing is that, um, I know we for ages five to eleven, we gave our um for for first dose. There were only twenty-five takers and we actually worked through the Board of Education. They send out an email uh to parents asking them if they'd like, you know, their children to participate in the clinic. So we had we had just twenty-five kids, so not a lot. Um, we also ran a clinic for boosters uh tw- ages twelve and above for Board of Ed kids. And we had seventy of those. So and that and the clinic was held at Monroe Elementary Gym. So on the twenty-third of this month, we will be providing second doses for those ages five to eleven. And again, it will be at Monroe Elementary. So, but all the clinics are slowing down. Uh, we were running a clinic out of the town hall here. We had like ten, twelve, and all of a sudden we're down to four people showing up. So there's there's a the clinic, uh, the vaccine is readily available and I think the pe- people that have wanted the vaccine have basically gotten the vaccine.
Do you know what our vaccination rates are in town?
Yeah, I wound up um going on the site tonight because I knew you were gonna ask that question.
I didn't look.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Uh, for ages five to eleven in Monroe, we are about thirty-nine percent, forty percent. For twelve to seventeen, we're at seventy-two percent about. Um, for eighteen to twenty-four, we're at seventy-eight. You know, the numbers are going up there from twenty-five to forty-four, eighty-four percent. Um, so.
Are those first dose, two doses or?
Well, fully vaccinated. Yep, fully.
The adults meaning boosted, fully vaccinated?
No, does not include boosted.
Yeah, because now boosted is what counts.
Yeah. Well, they they have, but that is under the definition. It doesn't need that. Yep. Any other questions on that report?
No, it sounds good to me.
But.
Okay.
So at what point does it stop being? At what point is it better to just consolidate where the vaccines are given so that there isn't manpower that's wasted for lack of need?
Um. And what do you mean specifically?
Like is it needs assessment done first to see what's the demand for the vaccine? Rather than setting up the clinic and having it be under attended?
Right, right, right. So what we we did here is um one of our clinics, we ran it through VAMs and we could see people signing up or not and were able to schedule it. But Ken really had a, you know, focus. He wanted to make certain that we got everybody in Monroe. So we had one more clinic and we advertised on he through code red. Do you know how many people want to come forward to get vaccine? Give us a call. Um, and we only had like three or four more people that were that that were able to show up, you know? We've got a couple homebound that we have to follow up and, you know, clean that up and those are boosters. But other than that, we just do not have demand. So right now, um, the only clinic we have planned is the second dose um for the little kids. That's it. You know? Any other thoughts on that, Mary? Mary, I can't hear you. You are on mute.
You hit the mute button again, Mary.
I'm doing that on purpose so that I can't say anything that goes on record. Um. I read I read that little thing. Yeah, um, okay. I just wondered where the setup parameters came from.
Yeah, it's um basically because um from telephone calls through VAMs, seeing things how trickle trickle in for us. We have the nurse that's on staff, uh, she's working uh through grant monies and so we have her come in. We we um so I think we were running a half-day clinic because things started to close down. We weren't worried about an hour here or there for her time, you know, uh, just one day a week. But when she she's waiting around, it's like, ah, and you're only getting five cases. It's it's just not, it's not worth it.
Painful.
Yeah, it's very painful. But you know, um, you never know with this virus what's going to happen and we're we're ready to take it on again. Um, I know you don't want to hear that, but that's the truth of the matter. Um, but why, you know, I've called up our pharmacies and we have enough vaccine out there and it really isn't a reason for us to to man this. You're absolutely correct, you know, to to keep this going.
I think at this point, it's kind of, you know, redundant and
Yeah.
al- almost to a point of where we're wasting our money at this point.
That's it.
Where we could be better served doing other stuff.
That's exactly right. Yep. So we've, you know, uh, so that's it's it's coming along. It's all going good. All right. So the other thing is the revenue report. You want to take a look at that. Um, so uh the only thing to really point out is the money for our restaurant inspection licensing. That money will start coming in on April first or before. So you're going to see that uh bump there and it's like, why are you only at forty-two percent of projection? Well, it's because a lot of our budget is that is the food licensing or relicensing.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten the money yet. That's the bottom line.
Um, all right. The only other question that I really kind of have about this is the uh salon licensing, uh line twenty-three. Um. Did we have people close? Because we're, I mean, we're only a couple hundred dollars short there, but that was just wondering.
What are your thoughts on that?
Some people close.
Yeah, I know.
Because we're at ninety-seven percent?
Yeah. Yep, that's that's about right. Yep.
About right, meaning like we have less
What, right. We have some places that have closed.
Okay. And nothing has reopened in their place in essence. So we have a a lower total number of salons that, okay.
We had a uh incident not too long ago. I'd heard about it in the news that there were a number of salons, that there were some illegality happening regarding hiring of employees and
Yeah.
Yeah, so and it affected a number of our salons. I don't know if they wound up, if it affected any of those guys or not. I don't think so. You know, their licenses were up, you know, they were fine for us being licensed, but um.
It was employment practices.
That's exactly why.
And tax stuff.
Yeah.
So you know what happened? Everybody who worked at a salon that got closed for that day doubled up and worked in a salon that didn't get closed and they were jammed with twice as many people, just saying.
I just saying.
I witnessed it. I'm telling you. Anyway.
Oh, well, try to people try to make a living the best they can. The American dream, right? Uh, so other than that, no, uh you know, we've had some restaurants closing. I don't know how many will know this next licensing period. Um.
It should be probably much shorter.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so those are those two items. Uh, let's see. Um. Anything else I want to cover there? The only other thing that that I wanted to talk about, not necessarily environmental, but you know, are the map is still red for cases in Monroe. And um our rate is seventy-seven point six per hundred thousand, which is high. Um, and though the cases are going down, and so there's a lot of discussion that's surrounding um cases and um as it relates to mask wearing, which we're going to talk about a little later on. Um, and the mask mandate and what the governor wants to do. Um, and I got off a call from the State Health Department today and there was more discussion than I'll kind of clue you in on. But I just wanted to report at least the number so that you know the town is, we're still on that map, which is pretty much all red, other than two towns. And um you know, we're up there at seventy-seven point six uh per hundred thousand, so. All right, so that is that. Any questions on D?
No, I think we're uh, I think we're pretty good there.
Okay, any questions on the the cases and all of that? If anybody has any thoughts?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, um, then we are going to go over grant status and I think I gave you a grant status sheet. Find it here. Okay, so um. So what's been happening on the grant front is, um, let's see. The Preventive Health and Health Services Grant is coming to a close. We just were not able to use that final bit of money because time ran out and in order to complete the program, what you need is time and you need to have people come to trainings. And so difficult thing in this in COVID climate. So that is so that that grant is basically being closed out. Um. There will be another preventive health and health services block grant. I don't know what it'll entail. And um, so I've it's uh, let's wait and see. When I say entail, like what is the grant going to be about? Are we going to still try to do outreach and do blood pressure screenings? Or are go are we going to be trying to work with like the senior center and maybe hire an intern to help us with um a seniors program of some sort? Could be something on falls. There's 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 a number of things, but I really don't know what's in the grant yet and what the state is proposing, so.
And there's no way to try to repurpose the money that was allocated in that, right?
Not not this four thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars that you see there.
I didn't think there was, but.
Grants have strict strict rules.
Didn't didn't know if uh, you know, quote unprecedented times could do unprecedented things.
Oh. The machinery is difficult and need to get that the CDC, this is where the money ultimately comes from, or the feds, to get them to change track.
Yeah.
So it's 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 like impossible. But you know, I have to, it just, in this program, I usually uh contact Griffin Hospital. We get like six, seven speakers. There is, uh, we have to do all these screenings and those that have high blood pressure, we then you know, call them out and we do case management and we try to get them to go to these trainings. So as you know, it's not something that you can do in a couple of months. It really it's a whole pro- it's a whole program. And um, it, the truth be told, the amount of effort and work that went into it was actually more than what the grant paid. You know?
Yeah.
And I'm not really sure because in the class you have, we had maybe ten people that would come to the class and I'm not sure if our efforts really got people to change behavior. Um. Changing behavior on things like um um weight, blood pressure, obesity, all of that, very, very difficult. So.
Agreed.
Huh?
Agreed.
Yeah, it it just is. You gotta you gotta get them while they're young, right? Um, let's see. Uh, then we're down to the emergency preparedness grant. Um, everything, you know, the the deliverables are being delivered. Um, our last clinic, I ran an emergency preparedness drill and so I just have to get the paperwork in for that. That's where we measure throughput throughput for kids. How long does it take from a child to come to the clinic? To make it through the front desk, to 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 wait in line, to get the vaccine and then to leave. And um, that's the measurement for throughput. So that, you know, that grant I'm always working on. Um, I've been slowly teaching uh my sanitarians some of these things because he being a uh a chief sanitarian, he will be covering for me when I'm on vacation and things like that. And he's an up and coming director of health. And so I've taken it on to show him a little bit of this and to try to get his feet wet on what is what does the emergency uh preparedness grant look like? And maybe he might be able to assist uh once we get another sanitarian on board. So um all of that is looking good. Now, the Health Enhancement Community Grant. Um, I just actually got word today and I'm working with our librarian that we've decided we're going to take a bunch of that money and we're going to give it to the library and they're going to buy um equipment, which is the camera, the three sixty camera and all of this that they're gonna uh set up and use to provide uh classes, Zoom classes, as well as space that people can sit there and, you know, attend the meetings as well. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to uh pass it over to the library and it'll uh get spent and we'll be able to have people come on board and give trainings through with a you um, sorry, as Zoom form uh format. So that's that's the plan for there.
And even though we're past the time, that's still going to be considered okay?
Yep, I went and I called up our grantor and they're like, Nancy, just spend the money. Okay. I don't want to just.
Twist my arm.
Yeah, right. I don't want to just spend it on any wa- on anything. I want this to return in dividends and at the library it will because we'll be able to give three or four Zoom trainings as well as onsite trainings for people that want to come on on many different public health topics. And you know, a lot of our seniors, many of them have gotten even used to using Zoom. So this might be a format where they might.
Obviously, I haven't.
Well, some of us.
Yeah.
So anyway, so that's good news there. The ELC funding, um, I am working with uh, there's two grants. There's the ELC and the ELC two. The ELC funding, some of that funding is going to pay for the nurse that we have right now. Um, and we have tried to hire people on part-time. And it's almost impossible. Um. Like we don't have an emergency preparedness coordinator as you as it as noted below the ELC funding grant uh notation under number four. Um, so there's some money in that grant that's got to be spent. Um. It's probably close to thirty thousand. Uh, so but there isn't, if you don't have the staff to spend it and we've had the jobs posted, I don't know how, you know, how many times. Um, there's, it's just very difficult. So I've been working with other health departments and so Trumbull, Stratford and Monroe, what we're planning for maybe ELC two funding, but certainly for the ELC. Uh, sorry, ELC funding as, but certainly for the ELC two funding is to fund a full-time nurse um, which will help us with contact tracing, which most of that is really outreach and and uh public health um messaging right now. Uh, and um, you know, kind of case management, not so much contact tracing. Um, but that's where we are and we're putting together the contract currently. So there isn't a lot that I can say because things are changing day by day. As a matter of fact, this um, the grant was supposed to be over in July. And it has been extended, I think, six more months from July twenty twenty-three. So because health departments are having a hard time spending this money and I think that's part of the problem.
Yeah.
Um. So that's it for the grants. It are there any questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Am I killing you too much with the detail?
Not at all.
Okay, okay. Just let me know. I I can get long-winded. Barb will be the first to tell you. Uh, okay, so on to unfinished business, the good news. Okay, I took your messaging from our last meeting and I went to Ken. Actually, I included the, I put the, a new position in my um in my budget. And I presented it to Ken along with a memo and explaining to him the position of the board and our needs. And I think that um, you know, he heard that loud and clear. And so it is now in the budget and the budget is now going before the town council. I'm not certain if it's the next meeting or not. But that is part of our budget to hire a full-time sanitarian.
All right.
That's all good news. Um. It really is. Any questions?
No, that's that's actually very good news, though.
That is.
Definitely something in my notes that uh that was something that we needed to make sure got addressed.
Yep, and I want to thank you because um having your support actually made all the difference. Um. Yeah, and and then that's just the bottom line. That's just the bottom line. So, but there are a couple of real good reasons why we're getting the sanitarian. Besides some food service inspections is that we are going to be going through a um a change in a training under FDA for code changes. So that's going to take a lot of training and a lot of work and a lot of time. And so it's just nice that this person's coming on board uh at some point.
Now, when when can we actually post that job?
Uh, Ken tells me that he wants to post this job before the budget goes into effect in July.
Okay.
So I don't have a firm date on that. I think he's going to bring it to the town council.
Okay, that that was kind of what I was wondering. Do we have to wait all the way until July?
Right.
Or could we post it uh hoping and assuming that it's going to go through?
Right.
And then uh, you know, by the time the person actually comes on board, if we have to fund something through whatever type of funding we can for this year and then the full amount kicks in for next year for the last month or two type thing.
Sure. So as soon as I hear word from him, you know, I'll let you guys know where where we are with that. Um, the sooner the better on my end, for sure. Um, okay, um, any other questions concerning that?
Um, no.
Okay.
It's all good for. That's all good for me.
Okay, everybody else all set? Okay, all right.
All set here.
All right, so the next thing is uh new business grant program and staffing, the staffing review, I kinda realize. It's in two places, guys. But anyway, the grant program, um, and I've already said this. Is to hire staffing under, using our grants is very difficult at this time and I'm working with Stratford and Trumbull on that. Well, I've even called them today. And Mary, I think it was the last time at the board meeting you were suggesting maybe reaching out to some schools and such. Um.
No, actually, yeah.
Yeah. We, you know, we have that, we have the position, it's only eight hours for public health nurse. We have um, a Michelle who does, who just runs, you know, heads the clinic and of our clinics. She's on, um, she's being paid by grant money and actually it's FEMA funds right now. Um, so, you know, we're winding down and, you know, I talked to her, I thought that maybe she could just slide right in as. You know, and do in, public health nurse, nursing work. But um. This, she has some hesitation, you know, she's, she's not a public health nurse. She's a nurse, she runs the clinics and things like that. You know, it's a different skill set to get out there and do public health education. So based, you know, I'm waiting to hear back from her. But there's the thought that we might be able to change the way we run this job. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just checking. I had this weird thing that's on my screen that just popped up that said I was thrown off, but anyway. Okay, so what we were thinking and doing is that this position, you really have the clinical side. And then you have the public health education side. And maybe we can use the public health education side to hire just a public health educator. Could be a student MPH person.